Okay, I'd like to call this, welcome everybody to the Budget Work Session for the 2324 Budget. And I'd like to begin, Commissioner Conner, if you'd lead us with a prayer and a pledge.
If everyone could join me in silence as we pray that we, as we do the people's work. Dear Lord God, on this day, that the hard decisions hopefully are done for the right reasons, for the right purpose, that each one of us at fiscal court and staff, and those people that are even out in the fields doing those works, are blessed, that you touch their minds, you touch their hearts, as we serve the people humbly every day. I ask this in your name. Amen. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to our Treasurer, Jordan Johnson, and if you'd lead us through this, please.
Yes, Judge, I will be going through your packets in the order that they were submitted. We will start with the budget highlights for fiscal year 2324, beginning with the General Fund. The General Fund revenues are expected to remain steady with a projected increase in property taxes of $300,000. Any adjustments to revenues have been increased or decreased in accordance with historical trending activity. The decrease in pension costs for the General Fund total impact, including subsidies to other operating funds, is approximately $450,000. Now, it's because the retirement contribution rates actually decreased this year. The Sheriff's Office subsidy is $3.7 million. The budgeted fund transfer to the Road Fund is $2.83 million, which is down from $3.48 last fiscal year. And the budgeted fund transfer to the Jail Fund is $3.82 million, which is up from $3.78 million from the last fiscal year. For the Road Fund, the state reimbursable project amount for Flex, Bridge Funds, and Other is $1.02 million, which is up from $430,000 from the prior year. For the Indian Hill Road Structure, Griva Station Road, and Resurfacing List Projects, asphalting from the road and LGA funds this year total $1.28 million, which is down from $1.85 million from the prior year. In regards to the LGA Fund, we are no longer classified as a coal-producing county, and instead, we are now only coal-impact. And LGA funding is expected to decrease by approximately $500,000 because of this. A coal-impact county must expend 100% of funds in transportation categories, meaning the anticipated $135,000 of projected income must be spent entirely on the maintenance of roads. For the Jail Fund, revenues from the housing of state prisoners are budgeted at $3.5 million based on the increase in the state per diem in historical trending activity. Federal prisoner revenue is expected to increase by about $400,000 for a total budget of $2 million. And it should be noted, this does not reflect any expectations from our current negotiations with the United States Marshals for the per diem rate that we are doing with Sumroll. The budgeted fund transfer from the General Fund, as stated before, is $3.82 million, which is up from the prior fiscal year. Economic Development Fund, the court has awarded funds to several projects since the inception of this fund and will continue to provide the funding for fiscal year 2324. For the Solid Waste Fund, revenues are projected to remain constant, and expenses are being managed to allow this fund to continue operating as an enterprise fund, which generates its own operating revenue and pays all expenses with no assistance or interference from other funds. Gate rates were adjusted on November 1st of 2011, and revenues are still occurring at expected levels. In terms of budget threats, the following items could have significant negative impacts on the proposed budget's financial performance: unstable fuel and energy prices, inflation and supply chain issues, lower-than-expected solid-waste revenues, and any reductions in state funding. The assumptions used to compile the budget is a COLA of 6.5%. As far as retirement contribution rates, non-hazardous decreased from 26.79% to 23.34% and hazardous decreased from 49.59% to 43.69%. The currently adopted taxes and tax rates are assumed to be held constant, with a property tax rate of 13 cents per $100, an occupational tax rate of 1%, an insurance premium tax rate of 4.9%. Are there any questions on that summary letter?
I know you've got the retirement percentages for the hazardous and non-hazardous. I know that's for the coming fiscal year.
Yes.
Do we anticipate that those would hold steady going forward, or that they would probably go back up? Because I know it's, they've dropped this time, which is an unusual experience.
Yes, we anticipate that they will go back up. And in fact, for our surplus and deficit projection, we have assumed that that $450,000 that was saved will actually be a future expense.
Okay. Thank you.
No other questions?
Any other questions? Commissioner Conner.
Thank you, Judge. Just my follow-up question, I have understanding on the LGEA Fund, throughout the state of Kentucky, you have a resurgence of coal, not only in the eastern Kentucky, but western Kentucky. For the first time in 15 years, Henderson County is opening up a mine in that area. I don't know if it's happening here yet, but if that does occur, then this, that fund would be adjusted accordingly if that occurs within our county, correct?
Yes. Our allocation, where a mine to open up in Davis County, we would immediately be classified as coal-producing, and our allocation would follow.
Thank you. The last one, you make a point in the Solid Waste Fund of saying that the gate rates were adjusted on November 1, 2011, 12, almost 13 years ago. The projections for that seems as if those rates have not been adjusted for some time. It would seem as if increasing costs, capital equipment, everything just going skyrocketing, that in time, it's going to have to be addressed. Not in this budget, but I assume that that will have to be addressed some other time. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Judge.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
No.
Jordan, it's yours.
Moving to the second document of the summary of major capital expenditures, I have each of those broken down by department with a description. For the total governmental funds, we have $6,179,940 budgeted in capital expenditures. For the enterprise funds, that figure is $3,412,682. I will entertain any questions on any of those items. They are pulled from the worksheets, which you've had for some time.
Any questions for?
No.
Okay.
Beyond that is the summary of revenue and appropriations. I will read this by fund, beginning with the General Fund. Appropriations are $47,857,163, with the same figure as revenue. For the Road Fund, expenditures are $6,972,750. For the Jail Fund, expenses are $11,710,937. For the local government Economic Assistance, or LGA, fund, expenses are $135,500. For the Economic Development Fund, $1,688,000. For the Bond Fund, $2,686,200. For the Solid Waste Fund, $24,826,925. For the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, fund, $10,250,000. And the County Clerk Permanent Storage Fees Fund is $381,000 for total appropriations of $106,508,475, and offsetting revenue.
Any questions from the Treasurer on that page?
No.
Okay.
The next page are the liabilities. As of July 1 of 2023, Davis County will have outstanding principal amount of $8,809,920.18. We are scheduled to reduce that principal during fiscal year 2324 by $2,176,096.34.
I appreciate you having on here the end dates of each of these, so. Any questions for the Treasurer on this page? Commissioner Conner.
Thank you, Judge. And Jordan, what is our maximum borrowing capacity?
That's...
Mr. Johnson, to repeat, what is the maximum borrowing capacity of Davis County Fiscal Court?
So by state law, that is a calculation of 2% of total property assessments in the county. Currently, property assessments are at about $7 billion. 2% of that would put our debt ceiling at about $150 million.
And so after this year, the debt will be approximately $9 million? Or $8 million, maybe? That's what you said.
Yes, that's what we'll begin with. At the end of next fiscal year, we'll be less than $7.
So substantially below what the cap is, what we can actually do?
Yes, sir.
Previous courts, I got to give it to you, Judge Castlin, having that kind of low debt is astounding.
We were very much about pay-as-you-go and to get rid of the debt that we had, so.
Very astounding. Very good.
The next page is agency funding grants. These are all agencies by which the court funds directly. As of last year, fiscal year 2223, total agency funding was $948,689, broken down between source of those funds. General Fund was $833,189. House Bill 202 Funds was $115,500, budgeted for 2324. Total agency funding is $958,261, broken down between fund source. The General Fund is $842,761. House Bill 202 Funds total $115,500.
Any questions for the Treasurer on this page?
No questions. Is this the time when we talk about, any questions about changes or anything, or does that come later at the end, or?
All throughout this. So yes, now would be a good time.
Whenever you want to bring them up.
Okay. So there, you know, going through these, there was, and looking through the grants, there's also, you know, with the Lions Club, I know that with the work that they've continued to do for the county, doing the different things with, like the tires and allowing us to use their property and other partnerships they have with Davis County, putting on the fair. It's, to me, it would be beneficial to them and to the county itself if we were able to increase their funds at least closer to the requested amount. I'd like to consider that.
The, when they were given the $5,000 last year, it was, the agreement was, it was a one-time, it was a one-time contribution. They came back this year with a $10,000 request, and so I put in the budget as $5,000. I gave 50% of what their ask was, again, recognizing that last year's was a commitment of one, of one time. They were, were not, in previous years of the prior fiscal court, they received nothing. And so that $5,000 was, was, and I don't remember, Jordan, do you remember exactly what the $5,000 was tied to, or no, the prior year? Because I did not. Mr. Hendricks, any chance you remember?
I don't know.
And I don't remember. I apologize for catching you off guard.
Oh, you're fine. I can get you that information.
Okay. Any thoughts from the other Commissioners to Commissioner Castlin's request?
You know, we're talking about the Lions Club and the fairgrounds, and yes, the $5,000, I assume, was to help with the fair itself when it was first done. And then, you know, that continued to happen. But yes, they do provide, especially as service on the tire reclamation side.
Right.
And that's, sometimes it can be a mess.
Yes.
To be able to take care and do. So in order to maybe compensate something for them, then whatever that might be, I'm not for sure if there's a number out there of, from $5,000 to 10, or $5,000 to 8, but at least consideration for us using their properties to do that.
Okay. Commissioner Roxbury?
Is that going to continue with the tire, what they offered before, or is that just, was that a one-time thing?
What's that, their agreement to allow us to do the tire amnesty there? As far as I know, it was a one-time thing unless, unless we go back and ask again.
Well, I'm all for supporting the fair, and I think it's a good thing for Davis County. I would like to request maybe just a slight increase, maybe we can meet them in the middle at 7,500, or?
Okay.
If we could consider that.
I would...
Can't do the 10.
I would be willing to go to the 25, if you're okay with that.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Commissioner Castlin?
Yeah, I think that that would definitely help.
Jordan, let's adjust that one to an additional 2,500, then.
Thank you, Judge.
You're welcome. Any other comments, questions on this page?
On the page, yes, not on that one.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so, you know, looking at some of the other things that we have, that we've reduced, you know, our Economic Development Corporation, I know they've had a lot of turnover lately with, you know, with their President, and then their, you know, other people that work closely with the President as well. And I know as far as the amount that we're offering is higher than a contribution rate than the other agencies, other than, other than the city, like discussed. But I believe that we could still reduce, but not reduce as much, and that it would be for the benefit of our community to help, to show that, you know, although we are decreasing it some because of issues that we have let them know about, we still support them enough that we want them to do a great job for our community. We know they're going to be doing a search for somebody else to take their President's spot, but as far as how much, you know, I look at that they've had two people that will be gone for probably about eight months by the time this next fiscal year starts. I don't know what their salaries and benefits and things are, but that's a savings that Economic Development has had themselves. And I think it would be fair of us to say that if, you know, if we could at least go by, based on the amount that they have with their salaries, their benefits, and reduce that for the next fiscal year, because that's something they have that they can roll over, that we're still working with them as a community, but we're also showing that, that we are, that we're standing behind what we said, that we, what we want EDC to do for us as fiscal court with our community.
Right. Appreciate your comments. I'm going to just say, you know, when I first gave the letter, that was meant to be a private letter that was leaked to the media, that they were at risk of their, of my recommendation going all the way to zero. I pulled back from that a little bit. I've met with the Executive Committee two times, I believe, and the full board once or twice as well. Those have been, I'll call it spirited conversations. I wanted to show support in, I guess, unity at some level, and that's, and that, quite frankly, that's the only reason that the $40,000 is in there and not zero. I'm not particularly eager to give them anything more. At the last meeting, someone asked specifically, when's the last time there was a site visit from, from an economic development prospect? It was September 2021. And, and I would think, as I said in my letter, you know, I want a return of investment for our, for our community. And, and at a time when the Governor's going around, all around our commu, all around our state, bragging about how Kentucky is the envy of all our surrounding states because so many jobs are locating here, and then he rattles off all the different counties and the jobs that have been landed by different places. Everybody's included on that list, except Davis County. Davis County is noticeably absent. And, and so I'm, I'm not inclined to add anything to that. So I would open it up for, for any other comments from the other Commissioners. Commissioner Roxbury?
I would just like to say that we did look into this, and we've had discussions with them. I've had discussions with some other entities, that they've said they have helped to secure employees and things like that, and that didn't seem to be the case with the ones I've talked to. So I'm in agreement with Judge Castlin to do the $40,000 this time.
Commissioner Conner?
Thank you, Judge. You know, whenever you look at agency funding, what it really shows to the community is where we place our priorities of what we would like to see agencies do and how we support them. That's what really agency funding does. And so when you look at the EDC in particular, and yes, Judge, I've been at several of those meetings, where the Governor has stated that the state of Kentucky has over $5 billion worth of capital investments that's coming to the state but never once stating Davis County. And I've even walked out with the Governor one time and simply said, "Governor, the next time you come, would you please try to add Davis County to your list?" He looks at me and moves on and does his things. But I think your narrative, Judge, is out there. I think it's been received, and people know, and everything else, of the dissatisfaction of what has happened, especially over the last two or three years with economic development in our county. And saying the monies from $184,000 to $40,000 is not really, it is about the money, but it's really not about the money. It's about the narrative of how much do we wish to support economic development in our community? That's what it's really all about. And to a certain point, I would even go this far, that we need to really make an effort that if we want to invest in our home, not for us, because none of us are probably going to be there when a ribbon-cutting happens with economic development, just doesn't happen that quick, then we need to make a concerted effort of not really looking at $184,000, but we need probably maybe add a zero or two to that, and say, "Do we wish to look at projects, land, and develop it so we are ready when the Governor says, 'Hey, I got something for you.'" Because right now, I'm not for sure even if he said it. Said, "Yep, I got one, but I need 200 acres." Now what we going to do? Now we have an issue. So we need to, yes, maybe we can come to some compromise of $100,000, whatever, to send a signal, but it's bigger than that. It truly is, that for our children and grandchildren, we need to make an effort that we're willing to invest in ourselves for the future. And that's been a political campaign slogan all over the place, but we need to make it reality, okay?
I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate it. For what it's worth, the last job, jobs announcements that was made, I was told that Hopkins, I want to say Hopkins County or Hopkinsville.
Hopkinsville.
And Paducah were looked at. Davis County was not, despite the fact that we had the land in the airpark that would, would qualify and meet their requirements. And, and so, again, I'm not inclined to just the $40,000. I understand what you're saying. I would be open to specific requests going forward, that if EDC had a specific request that, that was specific to a, perhaps, a company coming in, that, that we would give them additional dollars. But, but just to throw money into their general fund when we see almost no activity, I'm not, I'm not inclined to, to do that.
So to clarify, Judge, what you're saying is, say, for example, in the Hopkinsville case, that if they came to us and said, "Okay, we got property there, but we need $100,000 to do a geotech," I don't know, whatever the case may be, then that is where you would be open to say, "Yep, that's going to get done, let's do that."
Yes, sir.
So specific to some capital issue?
Yes.
That is necessary or required, that would be done. So with that being, I don't know how much money that might be, maybe that's set off to the side as a reserve for economic development when those things come up. That's what we're going to find.
I think, Jordan, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but both from the standpoint of the million dollars we have in our Economic Development Fund, and also just the way we do our budget, we would have that flexibility if such a request ever came in.
Yes, sir. The Economic Development Fund of $1.6 million in the budget is broken into expense categories, land, and I do believe, if you'll grant me one moment, land, land improvement, buildings and constructions, and payments to government agencies are the categories, so the money is there, the expense category is there, it would be available.
Okay. Thank you.
So in essence, what we're doing is, you know, you have the top side of many of these agencies for operating funds. The bottom side is most of the time for capital expenditures. So if those requests come in separately, and they, they are on the sheet as such, then we could, as the court, entertain those type of capital projects, whether it be from the Economic Development Fund that Mr. Johnson is talking about, or otherwise.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Any other questions about any other agencies on, on the sheet?
I do have a couple more. Sorry to slow us down.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Now's the time.
Yes. So the next one is, you know, is for New Beginnings, and, you know, being, working in law enforcement, working as a detective, working for people that have been victims of rape and sexual assault, you, you see the need for places like New Beginnings, and why they, they need what they need, and they do what they do. I know their ask was, you know, an amount through the grants was more than, than I could see the fiscal court could actually do. But knowing that they're losing funding, that, that could, and it's part of the program, it's the Victims of Crime Act, where that funding went to them through settlements from white-collar crimes that were paid into, it's like paid into the, the amount that actually then gets dispersed amongst the states based on the amount of population that states have. Over the last few years, that, that VOCA amount has gone down, but they're anticipating within the next year or two years that it's going to go back up, just based on the way that the white-collar crimes have, have gone, and the prosecution of those has gone as well. So that's why they made this a one-time ask for the amount that they did. And also, New Beginnings, it is our, for the grad area. It is our rape victims advocates, based on, you know, what legally are, it's a kind of a quasi-government agency, that, that they have state regulations they have to follow, and they are the place throughout the grad area that handles these types of cases. With their, with the amount of funds being cut federally, they are looking at having to make some serious cuts to personnel. And with that, you know, once they start laying people off, that means the services that they provide, of course, are cut. And that's also, it's not, it's also, you know, we've had an increase in homeless, homeless population as well that they've been serving to over these last couple of months. So I see that a need for our, our community to have funding to this, and again, that, you know, understanding why it's the one-time ask, but why it's important for them to have funding to help keep their agency, keep their numbers up, and keep the, keep being able to do what they do.
Any other quick Commissioners wish to speak to this?
If I could, Judge. You know, New Beginnings, they do great work, and they truly, truly do. The concern that maybe I have, and I think Commissioner Castlin and I have talked about this, is many agencies, not just New Beginnings, but all, some others, Oasis and others, will have a continuing funding issue, whether it be through VOCA, VA, whatever means that are funding them, will have issues. And so when you begin to do it for one, you have to make sure that you're willing to evaluate and be able to say, "Yes, maybe," or the hard one is a no, because it will open the door for others to walk through. Is there a need, and is the money there? Sure. It's a matter of making sure that we don't have unintended consequences of somebody else walking through that door to be able to fund, because as an example, Oasis needs the funds also. And there were several of them, I know, need the funds. So I just wish to exercise caution in doing it and making sure agencies understand. So I just wish to exercise caution in doing it and making sure agencies understand, this is one time, you're not a line item in the budget going forward if we wish to proceed.
And, and, and the danger as, as, one thing I've learned over my years of being in elected office is that when you say one time, they agree to one time, this one time. It's, it's, the first one we spoke of was a one time.
Yes.
We've just made it to two time. And, and I'm, I'm concerned when it comes to significant operating dollars that, that we, that we become the place where, where any agency turns to us as, because obviously the federal government can print dollars, we cannot. So our, our dollars are truly finite versus, and, and I guess the government, federal government is too once they go belly up and the Chinese stop buying our, our, our treasury bills. Commissioner Marksberry, you have anything to speak on this? Okay.
Just a one follow-up question, please, Judge. So Commissioner Casslin, did you have a dollar amount in, in mind or what are you?
Half of their request.
What was their original?
Their request was 150,000 was their request.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not inclined to go that high. I mean, we could adjust their, their 2,500 to, to 10 perhaps, but to, to help them some.
Is that something we need to have a later discussion?
My question to you is, is, is you, you referenced that, and I agree with Commissioner Conner's comment that, that.
The Volca, the victims of crime.
It's a dangerous precedent to say you had a, a, perhaps a temporary funding source. You went out and hired people. You and I spoke about this in, in my office the other day. And, and years ago, and it's been done several times, I believe, the feds have put in for, for law enforcement in particular, that, that they would fund a new position for, for say, three years. And then it falls on the, the city or the county to make up the difference going forward. And oftentimes, and, and in my grad meetings, I've heard people speak of being grant poor because there, there's a match or an expectation in the future when you, when you accept dollars. So I'm, I'm a little concerned. I was wondering would you, oh, you also referenced that they serve a multi-county area. Do you know whether or not other counties are contributing anything at all?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Which is something I think legitimate to, to find out before we come to a dollar amount then as far as if, if we would consider contributing to them. Because of the counties that, that they serve, you know, and if anybody else is putting into it as well for what their need is. Regardless, and great point about, you know, being the, the grant poor on it. I haven't done the research, but I was informed through New Beginnings that this is, that they've been funded for about 30 years through these type of federal programs. And it's so it.
So it's not, it's not a brand new program?
Correct. And some laws started changing within the last two or three years where with the white collar crimes, the payouts are apparently different, but those things have changed back now. And that's why they're anticipating within the next, maybe not next year, but the year after, it should be as it was before.
Okay.
Which, yes, one-time grant, it might be asked next year too, but.
Let's, let's leave it, let, let's just have additional dialogue in the next few days to, to, to see, to follow up on whether or not any, any other counties are contributing anything to their, the way we are. And we'll make a decision after we find that information out. Anything else, Commissioner Casslin?
I just have one more.
All right.
So, and the next one is, is with the River Park Center. And, you know, knowing what the River Park Center does for our community, the amount of shows that they bring in, they also, you know, they're not only bringing in shows, but when they're bringing in shows, they're also, you know, filling or putting people in hotels for some of the things and putting people in the restaurants. And those are all things that come back to us as a fiscal court as well with, with the tax that comes from those things. That's why I believe it's, and with what they do for our community, providing for the arts, the things that they host, the things they do, is why I still believe it's necessary to continue to fund them the way that, that we have been in the past.
Okay. Any other commissioners have anything to say to that? As, as you and I had a dialogue in my office the other day, you know, I, I had met with the head, the board chair and also the head, Mr. Jordan, about, about the River Park Center. We did not discuss the budget. We discussed the other item that, that's been front and center. And there were a couple of things that, that I'll just say that they created that programming. They, they didn't, this was, this was not programming that somebody said, hey, I want to rent a spot and I want to create this programming. They created the programming. We, Commissioner Marksberry was in a meeting with me and, and they admitted that they are losing money on that. And, and at some level, as a, as a contributor, as a funder of them, and I don't disagree with your points that you made. But at the same time, when, when they have created something that is as divisive as it has been in our community and they readily admit that they are losing money on it and yet they keep doing it, it's almost as though they're saying, we don't need your money. And, and, and quite frankly, that's, that's why I took them to zero. So, and I'm not, unless there's support on the commission to change it, I'm not inclined to adjust it.
Okay.
Anyone else? Any more questions?
I'm fine with it, the way it is.
With the zero, okay.
The only caveat I can make to it is, River Park Center has, for some time, had some issues of not programming, but really the structure itself, okay? And the city continues to put in monies to be able to take care of, because it is a city-owned facility. You had the Bluegrass Museum, what, about five years ago? Move out of the Turley Building, which is the southern part of the River Park Center and move out. That great space, three, three floors, okay? There's not been anybody lease it out or do anything with that facility. And so to me, it's like, okay, get your own house in order, literally. Now come and talk to us about what you might want to do for the rest of your operating. Because if that continued on, if it was my property, I had that kind of property for at least for five years with nobody in it and no income, my wife'd probably shoot me, but anyway. It just doesn't make sense whenever you have that type of asset that is not being utilized to its fullest capabilities and they simply don't do anything about it or haven't anything about it. And I know two tenants approached them in the last, well, probably about two, three years ago. And both of them did not move into that facility because of other issues that the River Park Center had. So until that gets addressed. I truly, regardless of program, because I really don't care. Well, I do, but I don't. But the building itself needs to be addressed and how it's utilized to be able to really bring in some additional funds to help them.
And, and that's a very good point. And, and when we met with, when Commissioner Marksberry and I met with, with Scott and Rich, I specifically asked the question of how much, what, how much would you charge for the use of that space? You know? And, and we really didn't get an answer other than the two, the two that you alluded to were addressed in passing, I'll call it. And, and just that they didn't think it was a wise thing to go with. But from my perspective, and you and I spoke about this briefly, if, if we owned it ourselves, any one of us, if we own rental property, we, we want it occupied. If we have space, we want it occupied because that's how you make your money. And, and again, to the, to the issue of, of whether we fund them or not, they're, they're sitting on an asset, I would call it a non-performing asset. That's what we called it in banking when, when you had somebody go belly up. And yet they've, they haven't done, taken steps to, to make those be, it be rented space, so.
That's an interesting tag, a non-performing asset at a performance arts center. Okay?
All right. Any other comments or questions on any other line items?
Not for me.
All right. Mr. Johnson.
Behind that are two packets. It is a line item version of the 2324 budget and the departmental worksheets. These were addressed by total in the summary of appropriations and revenues. However, I would ask if the commission has any questions on any particular line item in that budget.
I do not. Any commissioners having questions?
Sorry, Jordan, but what page are we on, please?
Oh, it's the budget. Yep.
Thanks, sir.
And just for the benefit of the public, we, we've had these, Jordan, what day did you send these out?
March 17th.
March 17th. So we, we've had this to review for some time. It's not like this is our first glance at this, these items. I see no questions, being no, no commissioners raising their hand, so next item, sir.
Now that we've finished the packet, I will give you all a summary of all changes that I have. On the agenda this Thursday, there is a KOH grant, KOHS grant for the Sheriff's Department, the amount of $150,000 for the gray key. If that is approved, I would include that in this budget. Now, it will be a reimbursement grant in full, so there would be a revenue of $150,000 and expense for $150,000, so the total budget would increase by that amount. However, it would have no effect on our surplus deficit projection.
Because it would be a grant and we would be spending 100% of the grant.
Yes. So if approved, I will include that in the budget.
Right.
The other change I have is an additional $87,500 to the Bluegrass Museum for the luteer. And I believe you were going to speak to that.
Well, I, I had, I laid on each of y'all's desk one of these handouts that, that the River Park Center has been working for some time trying to get, I'm going to try to say this right, luteer?
Luteer, I think.
So the bottom line is, it's people who manufacture or repair stringed instruments. That's what the term means. And, and so the River Park Center is working aggressively. Steve Johnson and, and also Rich, I mean, Chris Jocelyn. Thank you, have, have met with me several times. And at least one of you all have been in with us one of the times that we've met, not, not each of the times. But, but anyway, so they are asking for $100,000 for space transformation. And I believe it's actually going into the space that we just, at least part of the space that Commissioner Conner and I were just referencing to, to make that space available. For, and what, what they are actually trying to do is recruit master luteers to, to our community. Because the, the bigger theme is to make Orange, Orange Springs County our community, the bluegrass capital, you know, the, the place where bluegrass is. When you think of bluegrass, you think of us. And, and so, so they will be working with us. And Jordan, by putting this in there, I don't want to hand them a $100,000 check. This is, this is contingent on them being able to raise the other funding that they, that they are requesting both from the city and other funders, whether, whether it be from, I'll doggone it, the, the public at large or also other places that give grants. So I, I don't want to just give them the additional $100,000, you know, and say, here, do with it what you will. I want this to be part of this project. So anyway, if y'all would support that.
Absolutely.
Curious question.
Yes, sir.
Sourcing of the funds. House Bill 202 or have we decided that potentially, not that it's? House Bill 202 funds for the transient room tax, correct? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So $87,500 to the Bluegrass Museum for the luteer, contingent and placeholder at this point only. The next change would be $2,500 additional funding to the Lions Club. And the last change would be to follow up with New Beginnings to determine the final amount, not to exceed their original request. So with those four changes, I would ask for consensus from the commission that we will receive first reading of the budget ordinance on May 4th of 2023, unless you think another work session is necessary.
I do not think another work session is necessary unless the commissioners do.
No, I don't.
No, I don't.
Okay. We're done? All right. Any other questions before I adjourn?
Nope.
Just one more.
Yes, sir.
Please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Judge. I know that a lot of these numbers we went through fairly quick, but there is one in particular that I, hopefully, Mr. Johnson can address. You know, and I've mentioned it at previous court meetings about this year being the 50th year of our volunteer fire group. And nothing has necessarily changed as far as their funding, yet expenditures again, continue to rise. This issue of making sure our volunteers are funded on a, and our Davis County Fire is also funded, is going to be, like many other parts of what we do, is going to have to be addressed somehow, some way. I know if Mr. Johnson can maybe speak to what might be coming down the road or what we could do to help with the volunteer fire group if, if possible.
Certainly, their funding right now is based on a static amount due placed on the tax bill that is based on the class and type of your property. And that type of funding is an infinite growth model. And we've only experienced significant growth in the east and to the south. So that is the struggle that the other smaller volunteer station communities are having. We are evaluating that funding mechanism, seeing what can be done currently. We are subsidizing the volunteer system by contributing $200,000 towards fire trucks. In this budget, that amount has been increased to $325,000 for the stations that just do not have the funds available to purchase. However, we are looking at that funding mechanism to see what can be done that will not just simply be a tax increase.
Thank you, Jordan. And when you say static, what you're basically saying is the fire dues is one amount, never changes. You know, it is applied to roofs, I guess, or the number of structures that you have. And so when you have that, your income is just not going to increase as much as what your expenses are over time. It just won't happen. So I believe that's where Jordan Johnson, our treasurer, is really coming from, that it is an issue that we need to address in time, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Judge.
Anything else?
Nope.
There being nothing else on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.